Okay, good evening, everyone. This is the organizational meeting for the Newport School Committee. My name is Superintendent Colleen Burns-Turmaine. And yes, we are getting into the holiday spirit here in Newport schools. I'm going to remove the headgear for the nominations. So it's 5:02. This is, as I stated, this is an organizational meeting and for selection of Chair and Vice Chair of the Newport School Committee. I will now open the meeting. Do I hear any nominations for Chair? Ms. Bowlen.
I nominate Mr. Raymond Gomes as the Chair of the Newport School Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Raymond Gomes.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Drain. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations for the Newport School Committee Chair? A nomination and a motion has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, it's unanimous. Mr. Gomes, congratulations. You are now the Chair of the Newport School Committee. I will now hand the meeting over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you all for your support. Is there a nomination for the position of Vice Chair? Louisa, go ahead.
I'd like to nominate Rebecca Bowlen for Vice Chair.
Okay. And a second by Dr. Flowers. Any other nominations for Vice Chair? Any other nominations for Vice Chair? Seeing none? All those in favor of Rebecca Bowlen as Vice Chair signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and Rebecca Bowlen is voted in as Vice Chair.
Thank you very much for everyone's support.
Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you. So do we go back now and do the roll call? Just a point of yes?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Point of order, yes.
Yeah, so we'll just go back up and start the meeting at the roll call. So Ms. Nash, if we could do a roll call, please?
Sorry, Ms. Boatright?
Here.
Mrs. Bowlen?
Here.
Dr. Flowers?
Here.
Mr. Drain?
Here.
Mr. Gomes?
Yeah.
Mr. Leary? Mr. Leary?
I think he's muted.
Yeah, I'm here. I thought I was unmuted, sorry, I'm here.
Thank you. Ms. Winslow? Thank you.
All righty, with the roll call done, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. If Ms. Nash could start the video? Or do we have ROTC?
Thank you.
So that brings us into our moment of silence. And we will please ask that you keep the following individuals who have passed away in your thoughts and prayers. Dennis Darcy, retired Newport School Clerk. Ann Connell, aunt of David Connell, Rogers High School teacher. Garrett Loftus, father-in-law of Raleigh Brennan, Rogers High School teacher. And Emily Loftus, Thompson Middle School teacher. Catherine Noonan, mother of Nancy Noonan, R.J.'s Rogers High School teacher. We'll have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We've had the elections. 1.7 is a look ahead. We'll be meeting as a group on Saturday to set our goals and hopes for the year. So we'll have an update on that at the next meeting and look forward to meeting with the rest of my colleagues on Saturday to develop those. That would take us into our student activities, our Student Council update. We have Maggie Cohn with us this evening again, and she'll give us the update on our student activities at Rogers High School. Maggie?
So I'm Maggie. I'm the President of the Student Council. And we only have one sport, well, we have two sports updates. We're currently running winter sports registrations as of right now, but they have not started. And the girls' team are Division III champions, first time since 1994. So that was pretty exciting when that happened. The PTO is holding a virtual meeting on December 9th at 6:00 PM. All are welcome to join, and the link is sent in the Rogers announcements every day. So we have three donation drives going on with senior projects. We have a winter drive, which is hats, gloves, socks, scarves, all of those kind of things that will be donated to the Salvation Army. It's going to be running through January 15th. And I am not sure as we're virtual now, but I'm sure that you could contact Emily Murphy or Emma Martins, who are both seniors at Rogers, for information. The holiday drive is toys and clothes and gift cards to help the SSYI of Fall River, and contact Gabriela Cesarelli, Alexandra Cranston, or Jamie Ward for pickup. And we have one more for the MLK Center and the Newport Community Schools. We have lately worn jackets and jeans or other winter garments. And there are buckets at Rogers, but pickup can also be arranged. You can contact Emma Patterson or Olivia Fleming. And I know that was a lot. So there are three flyers that are sent in the Rogers announcements every day as well. The Newport Community School is still offering virtual tutoring every day after school, which is awesome. It's an awesome resource. The Student Council is hosting a very short Spirit Week the week before the holiday break, which will now be virtual. Our first day is going to be a tie-dying crazy hair day. And we also have a Holiday Spirit Day the day before break. And on Monday, there's a red and black day, so Rogers Pride. And as I said before, Rogers is going full distance learning on the 11th. And there's a virtual FASTER Day on December 17th. And that college advisor can answer any questions you have.
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. Is there any questions from the School Committee members for Maggie? Stephanie, go right ahead.
I was wondering if Maggie, if any of the kids had said anything about moving to distance learning, what they're thinking.
So we learned that last night at like 6:00 PM. So it's kind of pretty new to us all still. We're all a little bit disappointed, but we know it's the best thing to do right now. And we'd rather be safe than sorry in the end. So we'd rather do this now than have to do it in the spring, so.
And I have a question for Maggie. So have you heard anything on how the Christmas tree resale and trees went? Were you involved in that?
They sold out of trees, I believe, by 1:00 PM on Sunday. And they opened at 8:00. So they sold out of trees pretty quickly. And I think they were completely sold out at the end of the day. So pretty well, despite having to be postponed with the weather. But I know a lot of my friends got trees there, so it went pretty well.
All righty. Any other questions from the School Committee? Comments? Already seeing none. Thank you very much, Maggie, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. That would bring us into the next order of business on the agenda. It's certificates of achievement. This evening, we'll be recognizing the 11 Thompson Middle School art students for representing the state of Rhode Island at the White House. America celebrates ornament display. TMS was the only school selected from the state of Rhode Island. Grade five students. Grade five student Leila Costa actually attended the ceremony in Washington DC on behalf of Thompson. I will go through, I believe, I don't see her on there. Is Mrs. Sheen on the?
Ms. Nash is troubleshooting that right now.
Okay, so I'm going to give Ms. Nash a minute.
Oh, there's Anna.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, Anna, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Very good. So I know we were going to have some of the students with us. So I think Mrs. Nash may be.
Yes, you've got Freya right here.
They are joining us right now, the students.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will, as a, what I will do is as they're added in, I'll just go through the names, and we'll give everybody a moment. If you kind of give a wave when your name may be called. And hopefully I get everybody, and we'll clean it up at the end if we need to. But I will start just going through the names. And like I said, as I say your name, please give us a wave. I know many of the students are with us this evening. So first name I have is Melania Carapia. And Leila, Leila, I'm sorry, Leila Costa.
Yep, there she is.
And then I have Freya Doyle. Vika Dwyer. Natalie Gavin. Ryland Jimenez. Nikolai Konachev. Lorelei Mahan. Gian Petarudi. All right. And Ray Lee Young. And I see, that's what I have on the list. I see Mrs. Sheen is here, and I know she might want to say a few words in the achievement of the students as well. And if I missed anybody, somebody point them out, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gomes. I know that they're probably trying to get in. There were a couple little technical glitches, but welcome to our world of technology. I just wanted to say, this is just a great honor for these 11 art students to represent the state of Rhode Island with their artwork and have them at the White House and on the lawn of the White House President's Park. So we are the only ones in the state. And there will be more information and press releases coming. I just sent the School Committee a, all of the images and some more information for you to look at. And you'll be seeing more of the recognition soon in the local and area newspapers. So I do want to say congratulations to all of them. And they've worked hard. And it was very interesting to use technology for them to get their ornaments and to get them to the White House and to have this kind of prestige and presentation. So I thank you and be looking for all of that information. I see that Gian is here too, so maybe we can get to see him. All right? We'll go from there. But thank you. Thank you for the opportunity and the recognition.
Ray is muted.
My fault. Anybody from the School Committee that would like to make a comment or has a question for the student, go ahead. I see Dr. Flowers, and then I'll go to Mrs. Bowlen.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gomes. It's nice to see that the arts is still very much alive and well, whether it's virtual or in person. And looking at the designs that the young people made, it's pretty obvious that the history and civics, if you will, were incorporated into all of this. We can see the symbols of Rhode Island, the anchor used so much, the stars, all the features that really make Rhode Island stand out. And I think we should be immensely proud of our young people and the Arts Department also for really getting our young people aware that of this world beyond Aquinatic Island and that they are representing our state and our schools nationwide. So congratulations to all of you.
All righty, Mr. Bowlen.
Yeah, I was just going to ask Mrs. Sheen, were they given a lot of latitude in doing this project, or was it specific designs for each grade level? Or how did that work?
So I was contacted through RIDE and RISD at the state level, I mean, RISC at the state level. And all they had given me was to represent Rhode Island any way that they saw fit. And so we did it through a Google Meet. I gave them the information. They worked on theirs. I checked in with them, and everything was completely carte blanche. And when you look at the designs, everything was represented from just the careers, occupations, and what really Rhode Island is all about. So it was all on them for their creativity, and that was very impressive. So I do want to say, in addition to this, that there are also a couple Christmas and Newport art events that are coming up. So I'll be sending that information to you, and you'll be seeing it locally. And we have been using the arts to really connect with the other things during this time, when we seem like everything pretty much is at a lull. The arts have not paused. We've just pivoted, as these terms are being used all the time. But it's always creativity. And these are mostly fifth graders that did the work. So congratulations to them. Thank you.
Ray, you're muted.
Sorry, Ms. Boatright, sorry.
Okay, I think Bobby wants to go first.
All right, go ahead. Mr. Leary, go right ahead.
All right, thanks. First, I want to thank Mrs. Sheen for doing a, personally doing a wonderful job with the Arts Department. She's done a tremendous job since you've been here. Very impressed with that. But equally, I want to let the members know, and anybody else in the public here know, that Vika Dwyer is the granddaughter of one of Newport's most famous artists, the late Charles Dwyer. He's won many awards throughout the nation, throughout the world. He's a tremendous artist in Newport. And his granddaughter now is evidently following in his footsteps, so I'm glad to see that. And thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Boatright.
Yeah, I just, Diane, thank you very much for sharing these pictures with us. They are fabulous. I just wanted to say they're all extremely, extremely creative and very, very different. And so we thank you all, both teacher and student. So thank you. It's great. Fabulous job.
Yes, any other? School Committee members? Go ahead, Ms. Winslow.
I have to reiterate that I'm really proud of Little Rhode Island and Thompson Middle School and all this great artwork. It's an honor, you know? And so thank you to Mrs. Sheen as well. This is fantastic.
So yes, thank you. So again, thank you to all of our students. It's really quite an honor for you. It's great to do this work. Like everybody has said, the pictures and stuff we have seen have just been awesome. It's really exciting. It brightens everybody's spirit. So it's a great, great honor, and you should be very proud of your accomplishment and know that we are proud of you. So thank you very much, and keep up the good work.
Thank you. And Mr. Chair, we'd like to post those on our website. So when people click on the Newport website, they will see them. And Ms. Sheen, thank you for all your hard work and efforts. And thank you to the parents and children that are here tonight. Merry Christmas.
That was my first note of the meeting to Mrs. Nash after the meeting, was to post them on the website. So that's good. I can cross one off the list. Thank you all. Thanks for taking the time to be with us tonight. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So that'll keep moving along. I don't believe, as of the beginning of the meeting, we had nobody for public comment. Mrs. Nash, do we have anybody for public comment at this time?
We do not at this time.
Okay. So that'll move us down into our action items. The first action item is 5.1. Let me catch up with myself. 5.1 is a request for approval of Dell Latitude laptops for Pell Elementary School, reaching for the STARS grant. Dr. Bean has provided a request to purchase laptop computers as part of the Department of Defense Educational Activity, Reaching for the STARS Grant. The laptops are required to power the LEGO Robotics We Do Systems. And the total amount of this purchase is $4,402.16. Is there a motion to approve the item as presented this evening? I see Ms. Bowlen, seconded by Dr. Flowers. And I'll have Mrs., I'm sorry, Dr. Bean, just give us a brief overview of it, and we'll take any questions that the School Committee might have.
Sure. The next four items on the agenda are all about purchasing for the STAR grant. Even though this is our planning year of this grant, because of purchasing issues on many items, we're going out and purchasing this year. So that's, even though this is the planning year, that's why we're doing that. So these laptops are all about powering the LEGO Robotics program that, we have a small program right now in place at Pell that our STEM teachers use. And so this is just going to really expand this program and get it into more classrooms beyond when the children are having STEM. So that's just a little bit about this piece of the purchase.
If there are no other questions for Mrs. Nash from the School Committee? I'm sorry, Mrs. Nash. Dr. Bean, Mr. Leary?
Mr. Bean, if you could, each one of these STAR grants, give us a start date. I know it's next year, but there's also press out there, people out there. Also a sunset date. And finally, what are we responsible for during the grant and after the grant? You just did some of that with the, obviously, 5.1. We could continue that for each one of them to be benefit. Thank you.
Sure. The Reaching for the STAR grant is a grant that we collaborated with the East Bay Educational Collaborative. It's the collaborative that we work with on our Next Generation Science Kits for our science program K to 8. We co-wrote this grant. It is a, it's a military grant. It's a Department of Defense grant. It's a five-year grant. This year, we're in the planning stage of educating the Pell teachers, organizing a pilot group, and there will be professional development this summer. So the four action items tonight are all about getting ahead of the purchasing, because purchasing has been so difficult over the past several months due to COVID. So we're trying to purchase as much of the materials for the grant. We will own, we will own the materials that we're purchasing. We have extended warranties on the equipment. And, you know, that's kind of the basic overview for the purchasing action items tonight.
And if you could, Mr. Bean, are we responsible for anything after? You can do one at a time if you have to, whichever way. Are we responsible for anything after the grant is up? And when is the grant up?
Well, it's a, it's a five-year grant, so it's going to...
2025 or 2026?
Yeah, it's going to be, it will end the school year of '26. No, '27. It'll end the year of '27. I mean, as far as what we're responsible for, you know, if we want to extend a warranty on the computers, we could do an extension on the warranty of the computers and the Z Space lab. But we'll have to assess that at that time. But, you know, that's really our obligation beyond it. But the whole point is to improve the, the instruction around the engineering and the physical science in the K to 4 science program. So that will be ongoing.
Terrific. Thank you.
I have a question.
Ms. Bowlen.
Will all children benefit from this, or is it an after-school kind of program? How do you see it, you know, fitting in? Yeah, no, it's not just an after-school program. We have looped the community school in on this, because one of the components is to bring back the STEM fair. That was, you know, a pretty significant event that we did at Pell several years ago. So part of this grant is bringing that back. But having a coordinator to help oversee that, because that is a very big lift. And so we coordinated with the NFCO's program to help support that piece, as well as after-school programs. But the whole point of this grant is to provide professional development and training to the teachers, starting with a pilot group next year, and then expanding at K to 4, so that the teachers would be using these mobile labs, the drones, the LEGO Robotics in their science class to extend the FOS kits that we are currently under contract with EBECC.
All righty, thank you. Any other questions before we vote on 5.1? I'm not seeing any. So with that said, Mrs. Nash, could you do a roll call vote to approve 5.1 request for the purchase of the Dell Latitude laptops as presented this evening?
For Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Bowlen?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Drain?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero.
Thank you. Next item up is 5.2. As Dr. Bean said, this is also part of the request for the purchase of the Z Space Virtual Reality Stations and associated accessories for Pell Elementary School, Reaching for the STARS Grant. As part of the Defense Educational Activity, Reaching for the STARS Grant, Z Space Virtual Reality Stations and accessories are included. Z Space is the sole source provider of these virtual reality systems. Total amount of the purchase is $43,897. Is there a motion to approve 5.2 as presented this evening? Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Boatright. And again, Dr. Bean, I know if you could just give us a... And again, Dr. Bean, I know if you could just give us an overview and... That'd be great. Thank you.
So one of the components of the grant was improving the engineering standards of our science curriculum K to 4. So the Z-Space lab allows the students, well, there'll be 12 labs. So they're remote labs so that they can be used in any classroom, any grade, at any time. They could be used in an after-school program. They could be used during the summer in the summer programs that we run at Pell. So there's 12 Z-Space labs that would be purchased through this grant. In the proposal tonight, the total of the almost 44K includes the labs, the station, the carts, the computer, the software, the professional development, the site license, and extended warranty plugs. Yeah, so everything that we need to run the Z-Space and to provide professional development is part of this quote.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions from the school committee? Ms. Winslow, go right ahead.
Um, I think my question might be a little bit like Mr. Leary's question. I'm wondering, you know, five, six years down the road, when we own all this equipment and it's becoming outdated, who's responsible for maintaining it and continuing to ensure that it's useful to the students? Or is, you know, maybe after a certain number of years, we could trade it in for something new? Is there a lease agreement or anything like that? Just, you know, what's the long-term goal on some of this equipment?
Yeah, so we did not go for a lease. This was for a purchase. So, I mean, in terms of the long term, you know, a lot of the technology, you know, when we started to look at quotes for our current technology system with the laptops for the teachers and the Chromebooks for the students, we looked at the longevity and the cost. And, you know, that was part of, you know, our pricing, this Z-Space. So, you know, I mean, in terms of the grant, I get it. You know, when we write the grants and we get our materials, you know, we will own the materials. That's why we put into the grant that we did the extended warranty. But yeah, we will own the materials when they're done. So the long term is that we would have to extend the warranty on the materials or determine if there are, you know, certain parts that we need to replace. So, but in terms of the fact that we co-wrote this with our partnership with the EBECC community, you know, they're going to be supporting us throughout this grant. I think if, you know, we're finding that there's concerns or issues, you know, they're going to be, they're going to continue to be our partner. So, you know, I'm not really concerned about having to purchase an extended warranty when the grant is up.
I mean, in five years, that's really, that's a lifetime in technology. So we'll see where we are then. I just would hate to see us... I mean, it's good it's a grant, so it's not money out of our pocket. But I hope that, you know, technology purchases can have a future, no matter what.
Just, Mr. Leary, do you have a question? I see.
No, I don't care.
Okay, just checking. Ms. Boatright?
Yeah, no, I think it sounds like a very strong program. And to be for five years, I think that's awesome for, to not be just a very short-term program. And at the end of that, I'm hoping that, I'm sure that the school department will be looking for the next latest way to stay into this. But that is a long time for technology to last. So I think the extended warranty is a very smart thing to do. So, but it sounds like a very interesting program to start at the young age to expose young children to engineering and science and 3D technology. So that's great.
Okay, thank you. Any other school committee questions or comments? Dr. Flowers?
Or of a comment because all of this sounds like a dream come true for teachers of science, especially in the elementary level too. Because, yeah, books are necessary, all of the paper and pencil things are necessary. But this will, these are the things that bring science to life for the young people. And the teachers don't have to start cobbling all of their own stuff to get the knowledge across. And the fact that the professional development, from what I can see here, is relevant. It is, it's useful, it's up to date. This is another investment into our students. As you say, five years is a pretty good length of time when you think in terms of the number of youngsters who will be using this, the teachers, people, other people coming in and just spreading that knowledge. It's a wonderful investment. And I think that the folks who are going out to get these grants, it's just, it's just great. It really is. So I would, I hope sometime when things straighten out, we can actually come in and see a lot of this at work too.
Yeah, really.
Hopefully. Anybody else on the school committee? All righty, seeing no other comments or questions. Mrs. Nash, we do a roll call vote to approve 5.2 request for the Z-Space Virtual Reality Stations as presented this evening.
Sure, Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Bowlen?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero.
Thank you. That would bring us to 5.3 in this packet. It's a request for approval of proposed services from the East Bay Educational Collaborative for project management services for Pell Elementary School Reaching for the STARS Grant. This is a request for approval of proposal for services from East Bay Collaborative. I'm sorry, this is proposal services as outlined in the Department of Defense Education Activity. Reaching for the STARS grant will provide project coordination and professional development trainers to develop and implement STEM programs for Pell Elementary School as related to the grant. Is there a motion to approve 5.3 as presented this evening? Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Winslow. And then Dr. Bean, if you could give us a brief overview, that'd be great.
Sure, so Catherine, Dr. Catherine Eller, she's, I'm the project manager. She's the project coordinator. So this proposal in front of you is to pay for the project coordinator, which is part of the requirement with the Department of Defense that there is a project manager, that there's a project coordinator. So really, the project coordinator has the, if you will, the brunt of the professional development. So Catherine and I will be collaborating and working together. But she will be organizing, designing, facilitating the professional development around the lesson planning this summer. We're going to run a six-day professional development for our pilot teacher group. Then we'll be doing professional development around the robotics. We'll be doing professional development around using the drones in the outside classroom, in the gardens. Professional development for the NFCO's after-school program. And then, in addition, the Z-Space program. You know, there'll be ongoing professional development with that. Even though there's professional development connected with the Z-Space program, we'll be running ongoing professional development with that. So each year, you'll notice, like, the first year that we're in right now, the planning year, is less than year two. Year two is where a big bulk of the professional development is going to happen. And then it phases down a bit on year three, four, and five. So, you know, this is the commitment that we have with EBECC that they're running this, they're really running this grant. And we're paying for them to be the project coordinator, which, again, is required in the proposal with the Department of Defense.
Thank you. Questions from the school committee, comments?
Chairman?
Mr. Leary?
Is there a cost, Mrs. Bean, for the public to know again?
Oh, I'm sorry, there, so the total cost for the five years is $221,934.
And that's all grant?
Yes, it's all grant.
Just want to make sure the press knows that, public knows that. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any. Mrs. Nash, we do a roll call vote to approve item 5.3 for the request of the proposed services outlined for the grant.
Okay, Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Bowlen?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero.
Wonderful, thank you. I'll just catch up here. Next item is 5.4. And this is a request for approval of proposed services for Rebecca Height for outside evaluation services for Pell Elementary School Reaching for the STARS grant. An outside evaluator is required as part of the Department of Defense Education Activity Reaching for the STARS grant. The outside evaluator is required to establish a baseline, set project goals, and measure the outcomes of the grant work against those goals to determine student growth from the baseline. The request for approval of proposal for services by Dr. Rebecca Height is not to exceed $24,786.25 as outlined in the grant proposal. Is there a motion to approve 5.4 as presented? I see Dr. Flowers, motion by Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Winslow. And Dr. Bean, if you could again, give us a little overview, that'd be great.
Sure, so many grants that we write have to have an outside evaluator to make sure that we are, you know, reviewing the data, making sure that the grant is on track and that we're seeing the gains that we want to see. So again, the Department of Defense required an outside evaluator outside of EBECC. Outside, like, I couldn't be the evaluator for the grant. So that, we've put out an RFP and we hired Dr. Height to be our outside evaluator for the grant.
Chairman?
And Mr. Leary?
Couple of questions, Mrs. Bean. One, do we have, you can answer them together to kind of connect it. Do we have Rebecca Height's credentials? Number one, I'm glad to see it's an outside evaluator. But my concern is, and I don't know if it's in there or not, is she going to give us reports and meet with us yearly? Or do we have a way of getting to what's going on with this through her or no?
Sure, one of the things that I wanted to close with tonight is that Dr. Eller and I are happy to do an overview presentation to you at a future meeting if you'd like to, you know, really talk a little bit more about the program. We do want to get to the Pell staff and to the Pell PTO as well. But anyways, yes, so Dr. Height can, you know, present the evaluations. In terms of her, in the backup, there is a resume from, or actually, in her case, a biographical sketch of Dr. Height, her professional experience, her appointments, her experience being an external evaluator, her experience with federal grants, and multiple publications that she's written. So, you know, she has an extensive background in science and in evaluations.
So will she explain to us how she's going to measure this grant at some point? And are the reports coming from her or not?
Yes, the report, the evaluation reports would come from her. But Catherine and I can do a presentation to you to talk about the data that we will be sending to Dr., sorry, I just lost your name, Dr. Height. So, you know, we're happy to review that with you and present yearly on her findings.
And then the measurement of this is going to be done by who?
The measurements will be, there'll be multiple data sets that we'll be looking at. We'll be looking at the Next Generation Science assessments in terms of using a statewide assessment. And then we'll also be looking at local assessments. And we'll also be looking at participation and attendance. So we're looking at a variety of different data points, mainly because the state assessment is not given at the elementary level anymore. It's taken in fifth grade, fifth, eighth, and 11th. So we needed to come up with other data sets besides just the state assessment. But we will be using the state assessment as one of our data.
Thank you. All set, Mr. Leary? Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, Dr. Flowers?
Just briefly, looking at Dr. Height's CV curriculum, it's quite extensive. And her, you know, her writing herself on all of this and her background, it looks as though we'd be quite fortunate to have her working with us. And again, it's understandable that you get someone from outside to do an objective evaluation. So, and I would look forward to a presentation to familiarize us with what's going on.
Thank you. Ms. Winslow?
Will Dr. Height be with us all five years of the grant? Or, you know, if there's turnover, would they find somebody suitable? Or, but we'll have an evaluator at least all five years and hopefully the same person?
Correct. I mean, our, you know, our goal is that she's our evaluator for the five years. I mean, it is, you know, it is a very small amount of money when you look at, I mean, the amount of work that she's going to have to do for a five-year grant, so.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Does the cost, Mr. Chairman, she ever gave us the cost again for the grant?
She did. I'll say it again. It was $24,000. It was $24,786.25 for the five years.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Boatright?
Yeah, I just, I think this is a great, I was just trying to find it, but I think I read in there that we're one of 21 of these awarded to grant. So it's a pretty competitive thing. And I just thought, and I wanted to recognize the fact that you've gone out and received this because I think it's really, bringing this into the K to fourth grade is just a great thing to expose young kids to this kind of technology. So I, maybe you could talk a little bit, how did, did you say Ride brought it to us? Or did, did you seek it out? Could you just give us a little on that, please? Dr. Bean?
Yeah, it, I, the, I'm not sure if it came out through Ride or if EBEC brought it to our attention. Colleen might remember. But because we have a, you know, a partnership with EBEC, we, you know, discussed it and decided to apply for the grant. The, the unfortunate piece, and I mentioned it last time when, when you approved the grant, was that the middle school, you had to have 10% military in your school. And because Pell was the only school that had, they, Pell had 13% at the time when we were applying to, for the grant. Thompson just missed the 10%. So the original goal was to write this grant for the district and, but the only school that was eligible was Pell. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Terrific. Any other questions or comments? Okay, not seeing any or hearing any. Mrs. Nash, could you do a roll call vote to approve 5.4, the request for approval for the services of Dr. Rebecca Height?
Sure, Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Spolin?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you, seven zero.
All right, thank you. Thank you all. So next action item is 5.5. It's a request for acceptance of the McKinney-Vento Grant Award. McKinney-Vento Grant Program provides for instructional services that supplements a regular school program with the related supports for homeless students to meet content and student performance standards. A grand award in the amount of $40,000 is provided for the consideration acceptance. Is there a motion to approve the grant as presented this evening?
So moved.
Mrs. Spolin, seconded by Ms. Boatright. And I believe Dr. Bean can give us some overview on this.
Sure, the McKinney-Vento is also a competitive grant. We applied for the three-year grant last year. Each year, we have to submit an evaluation of the grant and, and reapply for our second year. So we have a team, we meet monthly to review our, our families that are experiencing homelessness. We work with our central registration to make sure that we're not blocking any students that are experiencing homelessness from being able to register. We use the grant to support the work that the community people, Mark McKenna, Rebecca Gomez, and David Viera do for the three schools. We also provide transportation for students who need transportation because they're experiencing homelessness outside of the district. We provide tutoring, we provide scholarships to MLK Boys and Girls Club. And so we coordinate that and meet monthly to update. We're also in partnership with Lucy's Hearth and with the Newport County Mental Health and with Child and Families Transitional Housing. So those are all our partners that I chair the meeting monthly to coordinate that work.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Bean on the McKinney-Vento grant?
Mr. Chairman, if you give the amount of the grant, can that be great?
$40,000.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on the McKinney-Vento grant? Not seeing any, hearing any. Mrs. Nash, could you do a roll call vote to accept the McKinney-Vento grant as presented this evening?
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Ms. Spolin?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you, seven zero.
Excellent, thank you. I think that, thank you, Dr. Bean, for your patience and updates tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, Dr. Jermaine, we're going to, oh, sorry, thought I heard somebody. Next item this evening is 5.6. It's request for approval of an amendment to the agreement between Ocean State Transit and Newport Public Schools. To the addendum to transportation agreement with Ocean State Transportation LLC. Director Andre and Mr. Gonzalez have determined that our transportation providers will be able to provide a service or service to multiple out-of-district locations on an as-needed basis using a shared service. The arrangement will also provide a cost savings to the district. And I know they're both here this evening. I'll go to Mr. Gonzalez since he just set up like some, like it's his turn. So we'll go to Mr. Gonzalez if he could give us an overview and information about the amendment.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Gomes. And good evening, school committee members. So early on this year, we received some information from Ride that we were having difficulty with out-of-district transportation. So we did not just sit tight and allow them to figure it out. We went ahead and figured out some alternative transportation for our out-of-district children being provided with student services needs outside the district. And in doing that, we were able to stabilize our costs for this year, which, you know, and so many unknowns going on. It's, it helps us to prepare for what our costs will be this year. So please, if anybody has questions.
Ms. Winslow, go right ahead.
Could you tell us the approximate savings that you anticipate with this different arrangement, different contract? So that is challenging at this time to quantify. But what I, what I can tell you as, as we put together this plan, this arrangement with Ocean State Transit, as children continuously are added to these routes, there are no more additional costs. So it really helps to keep things stable. And, and I mean that without, you know, very large jumps. For instance, if we had to fill up a whole bus, you know, obviously there would be a cost with that. But in comparison to what our oversight agency was, was charging us, there are real savings here. Because it, it used to be, correct me if I'm wrong, but like, no matter, it was by the student and the miles or something. It wasn't like, oh, we send five students to the same place. We just pay for one transportation. We had to pay for five students. And this is more like, we just pay for the bus. Okay.
Perfect. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Leary?
Well, first of all, I would like to say in 17, 18 years of doing this, this is like thinking the best startup date we ever had in a bus company. Believe me, I got numerous calls, anybody remembers two years ago? I had all the parochial parents coming together because they were not, the buses weren't working out. And I, and I think this is well noted that we have a great neighbor in Ocean State. Not only that they have the Middletown contract so they can be able to do this with combining Middletown students and Newport students, which needs to be totally recognized. But this never happened in the past because we've got different bus companies. So kudos to us getting a contract in there by Ocean State and them doing a wonderful job to this, to date so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Mrs. Nash, could you do a roll call, a vote, a roll call vote to approve the amendment as presented this evening?
Yes, Mr. Gomes? Ms. Spolin?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Next item up is 5.7 this evening. It's appointment to the school building committee. This evening, there are three members that, three people being added to the school building committee. It's been suggested for various reasons. I think it'll be self-explanatory. The first one is Candace Andre, Director of Special Education, and former Newport School Committee members and chairs, both of them, Joeyve Gaines and Patrick Kelly for their experience in the past. So we have three members that are being added to the school committee, to the school building committee. Is there a motion to approve the three members being added as presented this evening? I see Dr. Flowers and Ms. Winslow with a second. And I will see if either the, either of the co-chairs, Mrs. Spolin or Mrs., Ms. Boatright would like to say anything. If not, we can have a vote on the, the names. Ms. Spolin, go right ahead.
I just wanted to say that these are going to be really incredible additions to our school building committee. Pat Kelly and Joeyve Gaines both, you know, headed up the Pell build. And so they went through lots of the, you know, experiences and they have lots of knowledge that they're bringing to the table. And I also want to say that Candace Andre, one of the things when we were building Pell is that we did not have anybody from special ed on the building committee. And it, it turned out, you know, that that was something we were truly missing. So glad for these three additions to the building committee and what they're going to bring to the table.
Thank you. Boatright thumbs up, so I'm guessing she's okay. Any questions or comments from the school committee members? Seeing none, Mrs. Nash, could you do a roll call vote to approve the addition of the three people presented this evening?
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Spolin?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you, seven zero.
Thank you very much. And congratulations to those folks and sure they'll be great additions to the school building committee. So and the next item is 5 point, I got ahead of myself. I need to scroll back, I think it's 5.8, yes. 5.8 and it's the school committee regular meeting dates for the calendar year 2020. As I mentioned earlier, we'll be having a retreat. So this is sort of a preliminary, set these dates. It's for the next year. There may be changes coming out of, based on our discussions on Saturday and moving forward, but these are keeping to the first Tuesday of the month meetings that we regularly have. So these are the dates for the 2021 year. Hopefully well past COVID as we get to it. So is there a motion to approve the regular school committee dates as presented this evening? I see Ms. Boatright with the motion to approve, seconded by Ms. Winslow. Any questions or comments from the school committee? Ms. Winslow?
Just want to confirm that I heard it correctly. We, we will be able to discuss like start time, that sort of thing at our retreat this weekend?
Yep, that retreat will address all of that. Maybe additional meetings, change in the meeting, anything that might be discussed. But times, that'll all be part of the discussion as we move forward this weekend, starting this weekend, so.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Any other questions or comments from the school committee? Seeing none. Mrs. Nash, a roll call vote to approve the schedule as presented this evening?
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Spolin?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you, seven zero.
Excellent. That takes us to the next section of the meeting into section six. First item on section six is a take it outside grant discussion. Representatives to meet school will provide details on the use of the take it outside grant funding for their buildings. The district was awarded $35,000, which will support culinary arts, construction technology, and a wellness outdoor pop-up at Rogers High School, a program with Newport Tree Conservancy at Thompson Middle School, and outside play equipment for Pell. I am not sure, Dr. Jermaine, who's going to? I see a bunch of people have popped up, so I'm not sure who.
We're gonna, we're gonna actually, we're gonna start at the high school level. We'll give Ms. Clark the opening remarks and then we'll go middle and then we'll go to elementary. So I want to thank all of them for being here this evening. And Carrie, why don't you take it away?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, school committee members and congratulations on your reelection or election. Nice to see everyone, old faces and new. So yes, so we had a very quick turnaround with the take it outside grant. I think it was due within a couple of days from when we found out about it. And you may have heard about it. There's a lot of cities and towns, Newport, other school districts, businesses have applied for it. It's a great program in Rhode Island, helping out a lot of different organizations to take it outside so that we can have some fun. And in our case, still have some learning and hands-on learning despite all the COVID regulations and restrictions and keeping people healthy and safe. So, so the, a couple of things. So as many of you know, I work a lot with the career and technical programs. So, you know, I talked to a couple of teachers and what we came up with were to do, was to do with the, with the career and tech, we're going to do a culinary and a construction technology kind of expansion. So I'm not sure if you have the actual write-up of the grant, which is probably helpful. It outlines everything clearly. Okay, good. So I don't want to go into too much detail. But the, so I'll start with the career and tech. So for the culinary department, we basically have an outdoor restaurant that we've ordered. So, so it's really exciting because, as you know, the colonial dining room is a huge learning experience for our students in culinary, not only in culinary arts, but in customer service and communication leadership and the front of the house. So we basically, we've ordered a couple of different tents. So one of the tents would be where they'd have all their equipment. We have all this catering equipment that we ordered. I worked with the chefs there and they kind of told me everything they wanted. So it's kind of like, if a restaurant said, well, if we were going to put something up outside, what would you want? And that's what we ordered. So we ordered some really nice tents with tables, chairs, those really nice heaters that you see out at the restaurants around town. Those nice big patio ones with, we got the propane. We have all the catering equipment. So, you know, the thought is, we don't have exactly So, you know, the thought is we don't have it exactly mapped out as to when we're first going to start it, but I'm working with them and working with the students on coming up with different ideas on different events that we could have or potentially going to Pell and having, say, we wanted to do our Chinese food or we wanted to do the lobster rolls that we do in the spring, but we're not quite ready to have it at Colonial Dining Room. The thought is we could set everything up over at Pell and teachers and folks from Pell could could come and get lunch, parents could get lunch. We could do some community-based food donation type of thing. So people from the community could walk right over and get food. So we're super excited to do some volunteer work. There's a lot of things we can do with local organizations in just putting together meals for them. And around the holidays, we could do not a soup kitchen, but something like that where we could set up in different areas of town if we were able to get permission and distribute meals for special events. And I mean, if we wanted to do your inauguration outside next year, maybe we could do that. So it's really exciting that there's a lot of opportunity there. We have some great equipment that we're bringing in that I think a lot of restaurants would be excited to have. So I know they're really excited and we want to get students involved and community partners. So it's basically an outdoor restaurant with iPads and other things, technology built in. So it's it's really aligned with what's going on in the in the restaurants. The other thing with career and tech is the construction technology. So for those of you who have been down in the construction lab, you know, it's pretty elaborate, it's big, but there's only only so many students you can have per capita in there safely right now. So what we did was put together kind of an outdoor classroom. They do a lot of outdoor work all the time, but this gives them enough shelter and some technology and heat and things. So there's a big garage door opening downstairs, if you've been there. And we ordered a huge tent that's going to kind of expand out. There's different tables, there's heaters, there's what else do I have on the list there? We got, so we got really nice Google microphones so that the teachers can actually, right now, I don't know how much detail you know about the the hybrid teaching, but a lot of teachers don't have a wireless mic that they can walk around with and really engage with students and kind of be themselves. So we got some really nice wireless microphone equipment and and some iPads. We got a, some really nice cameras so they can be placed around and kind of just so kids can spread out and they can still work out in the tent and be doing stuff in the actual lab and the teachers and the TA can kind of just walk about. And it's basically just an expanded classroom for them. So it's just more space for them to be safely distanced. And when they're working on special projects and they need to be closer to each other, this just gives them more space to kind of break it down and do it in smaller pieces. So that's, again, that's another exciting thing for career and tech. And the last thing is a wellness pop-up, we call it, because pop-ups are very cool and trendy. And it is actually a pop-up. So for Rogers, it's for any, all the students. It could be for staff, it could be for the gym teachers, it could be for health, it could be for a science teacher that wants to do something different. So originally, we were going to do a 30 by 30, one of those big domes. So if you think about, if you've been at Gurnee's and you see the little teeny domes that they have that you can have drinks and things in there, it's much, much bigger than that. And it peels back, so there's a huge opening so the fresh air can flow in and out. So I ordered all different matting flooring for the ground. There's going to be yoga, like the big balls that you can, that you can stretch on, there's going to be foam rollers, there's weights, kettlebells. There's two iPads and a screen so that students, if they wanted to do a guided meditation, they can go and do that. We all know mental health is more important than ever with everything going on in COVID and a lot of our students are struggling. So this is kind of a way that they could go outside of the gym or go outside of the actual building and safely, you know, they would still have to distance. It would all be opened up so you can see in there. And they could just kind of do their own thing in their own space if they wanted to do a little group or maybe they want to go by themselves and kind of spread out in there and do their own thing. It's just kind of a safe space for them to go collect their thoughts, they could write in a journal. Like I said, there's the iPad so they can just hook right up and do a guided meditation. They could do a guided workout together. And we're getting, we have all the exercise bands, all sorts of like fun things that they could, that they can easily do outside in the, in that dome. So it's, I'm very excited about it and it came together very quickly, but we ended, we rewarded the money, so we're running with it and hopefully get that up and running soon. That's all, sorry for taking too long.
I think you had some cappuccino tonight.
Well, try to be fast so that it don't take up time. So maybe I'm a little, maybe I had too much coffee, but.
Well, all well rehearsed. I think there's a couple of questions. I see Ms. Winslow first.
Sure.
I just wanted to comment on the catering aspect of the culinary program. I was super, super excited to see that. My very first job in high school was catering and I've probably worked for every caterer on the island. It's a big, big business and it's really, really great for the culinary kids to get this experience. And I think it's even better that they're going to be out in the community and be visible, be able to bring this equipment and set up shop and actually do things at other schools and other locations. And great visibility and super excited for that. So yay. But I do have one question. I was curious to know if, I know this, the grant came up fast, so you guys, you know, put these ideas together, but are any of these ideas based on student feedback or student requests, you know, like the wellness pop-up? Or is that something that maybe the teachers have more focused on that they would want for the kids? That's my question.
I can just briefly answer that. So the wellness, so no, I did not have time to really speak to the students, unfortunately. Literally, this was like an overnight thing that was put together. And so I did work with the teachers and my, a friend of mine actually has a kind of a wellness pop-up. She teaches at the Green School and they focus a lot on mental health and wellness. And she's a wellness instructor. And so she has a, she has something like that over there and that's how I was inspired by it. And I kind of just made it a little bit different where there's technology involved. She basically just has yoga mats and like she's a yoga instructor. So she takes the kids out to do yoga. And so this was, and it's amazing, like it's a very successful program. The kids are very engaged in it. They, you know, it's, it's very popular. And so, and I just, I know that students have responded really well to these types of things where they really like having that time to think whatever they're doing, whether they're writing, listening to music, stretching, whatever it is, they, I just know that it really helps them. I think as individuals, if we all, if you participate in that kind of thing, you know, it's helpful and especially in dealing with stress. So it's kind of inspired by that. So no, at the front end, we didn't, I didn't involve students, but I plan on in executing it, they're going to be very integral in helping me kind of shape it and roll it out, the theme and vibe and planning the event. So they will be involved, but at the beginning, they weren't just because of time. For me, I know they still, Pell and Thompson still give their updates, so.
Any other questions for Carrie before we move along? The only one I have, do we have a timeline on like when do you think this equipment will be in or what, how does that, how's that looking?
Well, so we have quite a few items, so it's going to be, they've already started coming in, but some of them won't be in until the end of December, January, because some of the things are so in demand, like the, the tents and bubbles and the heaters were on back order. So we actually had to, we, like, we ordered some stuff, it got canceled because they were sold out and so we're, we had to find other vendors. So those bigger things will take a little bit longer, but I'm hoping in the new year, again, it depends on where we are with school and what's going on in the schools. But in the spring, I'm hoping that we can have something launched and like open for kind of you to come check out. That's, that would be my guess of it, just because based on weather and COVID and everything else, realistically, getting everything set up, we're going to have to enlist a lot of the carpentry kids to help set this stuff up. It's like big equipment, so it'll take some time on our end. I think the other schools have things that will be much quicker, but ours will take a little bit of time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Dr. Jermaine.
I was just going to say, now we'll move on to Thompson Middle School. And I see Taylor Rock here and I know Mr. V is here as well.
Thank you, Dr. Jermaine, and thank you, school committee, and for the chance to speak to you tonight. And also thank you, Mr. V and Dr. Bean for asking me to come and talk a little bit. Our collaboration has been with the Newport Tree Conservancy and the seventh grade science department at Thompson Middle School. And we initially started talking about this potential outdoor learning lab experience for the seventh grade towards the end of summer. And we had some of the pieces in place. And then the take it outside grant became active and we were able to expand our work and apply for some funds to, to help with the tree conservancy work. So to date thus far, we've taken the entire seventh grade on walking learning labs around the Thompson neighborhood, back behind the Martin Luther King Junior Center to the small cemetery there to do tree identification and learn about pervious versus impervious surfaces. So what surfaces, surfaces soak up water, what surfaces have the water drain towards our harbor and waterfront and don't soak up the water and learn about photosynthesis, which ties into our chemistry curriculum with the seventh graders as well. And it was also just really exciting for the kids to get outside. It was during this new hybrid model of of middle school and you could tell that they were just really excited to have kind of some normalcy of a walking field trip and stuff in the beginning of the year. And we were able to set up a rotating schedule. So over two weeks, we had really, we were able to get the whole seventh grade outside and we also filmed our, our field trip, one of the, one of the field trips, so we could share all the, that to all the distance learning students and that were at home. And so they could watch and participate. And the kids learned about how to identify trees and by their leaves. And we talked about ginkgo and blue cedars specifically. And they learned about the benefits of trees in Newport, how they can give shade, they can soak up stormwater and all sorts of, and give habitats to animals. And it tied, that ties into our ecology broader unit, which is part of our seventh grade curriculum as well. And just this last week for my group of seven C2, that my half of the seventh grade and happening this week with the other seventh grade, Rachel Holbert, who is a, the Newport Tree Conservancy educator and program director, is, has met with us over Google Meet and has taught us about biometrics, which is how to measure trees and their circumference of their, of their trunks and also the heights of the trees using your height as a person and your shadow and then the tree's shadow cast. And that ties in really well with our ratio and proportions units with our seventh grade math class. So they're getting, and that just happened to be about two weeks ago. So they're having some reinforcement of their math concepts and science, which is terrific, even though they think I'm tricking them into more math, but it's a, it's a, it's a really good thing. And it's also a way for them to get outside and they know how to do it so they can partner up with someone in their safety bubble with COVID, whether that's a family member or maybe a friend down the street and they'll be outside. And we've encouraged them to go outside in a safe area and measure their tree height on a sunny day. So we've been watching the weather and, and really getting the students involved that way. The long-term goal of this is for students to adopt a tree in Newport. And there's a website called Open Tree Map that has a Newport page on it. And it has over 1,000 trees in Newport that are already highlighted on it. And the city of Newport knows about this and is involved in it. And there's observations of the tree, there's the address of the tree, and there's also these things called ecosystem services. So how much CO2 the tree is taking out of our atmosphere, how much stormwater the tree is, is soaking up per, per year and how much CO2 it's saving for not having to use air conditioning. And then they've actually calculated the dollar amount. So kids are actually seeing that trees are worth money and that there's jobs in being an arborist or being the tree warden of Newport. So we're making some connections that way as well. And then we'll go outside again in the spring. That third learning lab is still under construction. And we also applied for the second round of the grant funds to see if we can collaborate potentially with the greenhouse at Rogers and maybe nurture some saplings at Thompson and have some connections that way. So that's just an overview of what we've been doing so far. And Mr. V might want to add some a little bit as well if I missed anything.
Abs, absolutely not. That was perfect. Thank you, Mr. Rock.
Thank you, thank you.
Brady, thank you. Any questions or comments from the school committee? No, I see a thumbs up. Nope, I think that's great.
It sounds amazing and it makes me want to go back to school. I don't ever remember doing anything this fun ever, any of these programs.
No, it's certainly the trees are great. Newport's got a long history of trees and there's a lot of trees that are very unique and rare. So we have a lot of special trees as well. So it's a great lesson for the kids. Thank you. And good, Dr. Jermaine?
Oh, I was, I'm sorry, Mr. Gomes, I'm Mr. Chair. Nicole Sylvia, she's up next from elementary Pell.
Thank you, Dr. Jermaine, and thank you, school committee. Pell's going to be quick. So we wrote the take it outside grant to to boost our recess equipment. Each class has their own recess bin full of equipment that they take in and out so that we're keeping our pods stable. And also while we're on the recess, we divided our play areas and we bought some of that orange fence netting to divide so the kids had a visual of where the division was along the playground area. So that way, each class plays in one stable pod. So we separated all of our play areas. So it's the upper school playground, the lower school playground, in the playground across the street, and we were able to get 12 different play area at Pell. So each class has their own play area each day. We also ordered an outdoor tent and an outdoor heater so that we can expand our outdoor capabilities. We already have the outdoor classroom on the upper school playground, but we thought a second outdoor classroom area would be beneficial to our teachers in this time. And we figured it's New England, three seasons out of the year, it can be chilly. So we got some outdoor heaters as well. Those have been ordered with the propane as well. And then we originally had an outdoor, one of those big blow-up project, project, screen projectors that, so we could do an outdoor family night. But one of our community partners that works with Mr. Markalot has one of those that they said we could borrow. So we took that money and rolled it into our outdoor Wi-Fi extender. And then we applied for the second round of grants after I consulted with Mr. Young. We've got a quote to expand our Wi-Fi so it should reach all of our outdoor classroom areas. So it will be in the lower school playground, the upper school playground and across the street in that playground.
The good news is for Pell and Ms. Sylvia, the Commerce Corporation called, and they are going to fund your extension. So you will be getting additional funds. Mr. Rock, they weren't able to do yours, but I'm trying to find another grant person to support yours. Mr. V did send something and I'm hopeful I'll have good news for you before Christmas. But congratulations, Pell. And Taylor, yes, so the actual grant from the Commerce will be approximately over $40,000 for Newport. So good work, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you all for your work and thanks for spending some time with us tonight to tell us what you've done. So thank you. Have a good night. Thanks. So that brings us to 6.2 and that is an update from the school building committee. And for that, I will look to Mrs. Bowlen or Ms. Boatright. So take it away, ladies.
Do you want to? Well, I think there's a really good, the update as written is really good, but we probably should read it out loud because we really want to keep the community updated. So without being redundant, I will read what, what we wanted to report. So the RFP, that's a request for proposals for the owner's project program manager, which is, the initials for that are OPM, was sent out on Wednesday, November 25. And we used the RIDE template language and feedback was provided by members of the OPM working group. And Attorney Galvin reviewed and commented on the document, which was then finalized and distributed by Aaron Mulligan, our city purchasing agent. So the RFP closes tomorrow, December 9th at 1:00 PM. And then the interviews will be conducted on December 16th and 17th by the And then the interviews will be conducted on December 16th and 17th by the, uh, the OPM working group. The school building committee will meet on Monday, December 21st to review the recommendation of the OPM working group and determine a rec- recommendation to the Newport Schools Committee for award on Tuesday, December 22nd. And the N, um, the Newport Public Schools Administration has been working on RFQ for the architect designer to present to the school building committee in December, in December, um, either on the 7th or the 14th to help keep the project moving forward. But we also determined that we will not send that out, um, until we have the owner's project manager on board and we get his recommendations, um, you know, to insert into that. So we just are trying to keep up with the schedule that we had set and, um, you know, to, to fat, without fast tracking it, we're going to be moving ahead at, you know, at a good pace here. So that's where we are right now. And do you want to add anything, Louisa?
No, I think that's it. We had that meeting on the 7th yesterday where we decided that RFQ, which is the request for qualifications should just be held until the OPM is on board. So, yep.
And one other thing, just to know, uh, we do have, uh, members of the school building committee are going to be going out on Thursday to visit East Providence High School, which has, um, a career and tech center much like ours, and we're going to be going on a tour of it. And they're almost in the final stages of that build. So that should be really great to get ideas and, uh, and we're also, they're, they've been very helpful, East Providence, in helping us get all of this together because they, you know, are two steps ahead of us. So, um, we were, we've been able to use many of their templates for, uh, for things. So. Any questions?
Dr. Flowers, go right ahead. You might be muted, Dr. Flowers. There you go.
I'm sorry. You can't read lips? Okay.
I could. That's how I knew you were muted.
Anyway, uh, you mentioned was East Providence High, um, but they have a career in tech. Are they integrating their career in tech the way we're planning to do? Yes, they are. Okay, that'll be useful to see then, yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Uh, Ms. Winslow, go right ahead.
I don't, I don't know when to ask this, but I, I wonder if, um, some of these write-ups that you have, the kind of the minutes and the summaries of the school building committee meetings, could, have you talked at all to the, the Building Newport's Future Committee about what they're going to do with their website? And maybe we could use it to sort of post like blog style, you know, updates on the project? I don't know if there's, they're going to keep the website going or not, um, but it's just an idea. You don't have to answer, but I just wanted to throw it out.
That is a great, great idea. I think part of the job of the OPM too is going to be to document the entire process and, and to keep that up with the website up. So that went out in that, you know, is one of the requirements, but definitely we want to keep everybody apprised of what's going on during the project.
Just since people already know that website too, it might be a good.
Right.
You'd have to, I don't know, I can't speak for them, so.
I think it might have to be on the school department website, but we'll have to check on that just to, just because that's where people would mostly probably go, but we'll, we'll, we'll look at that. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. I don't see you here any, so thank you, uh, to our co-chairs, uh, Ms. Boland and Ms. Boatright. Thank you. Uh, next item is 6.3. It is the superintendent update on the school reentry plan update, which I guess becoming a school reentry plan for after the holidays. But, uh, Dr. Jermaine, if you want to bring us up to date.
Thank you, Mr. Gomes. Yes, as, um, Mr. Uh, the chair was alluding, we are going to be going out on distance learning. Uh, we did move on Sunday night, we made the decision, uh, in consultation with Dr. Bean and Principal Westman, um, Thompson due to substitute teacher shortages and staffing shortages and also, um, the concern on a day-to-day basis about, um, COVID-related cases, uh, we decided to move Thompson to distance learning. We also, um, looked at Pell Elementary School as well, and it's wasn't for the pub, for the public information. It wasn't about, um, COVID cases, so many of them, although we did see an uptick this past week. It is more that we have a staffing shortage due to close contacts. So literally at times we've had to shut down classrooms if a classmate has come down, shown up positive for COVID, or if a staff member has, um, been positive. So at the middle school level, we saw the biggest challenges because, just because of their structure with the cluster. And if one teacher came down or a staff member, I should say, came, was positive, it impacted all the students in that particular cluster because they saw all four groups of students as part of the cluster. So, um, for Thompson, uh, they are on distance learning until January 4th. Pell Elementary School, we wanted to give the teachers and families some time and we have been saying from the beginning, please make sure you have some alternative childcare. Please be prepared at any time if we do have to go to distance learning, but we wanted to give those families a little bit more time. So we will, um, start distance learning on Friday. And that goes the same for Rogers High School. Rogers High School will go to distance learning on Friday as well. The biggest reason for that is because of the 14-day quarantine. If we had gone beyond that day, any and all staff or students, families would have to be on a 14-day isolation or quarantine period, and that would take them through Christmas or including Christmas. So we are, um, in distance learning. Uh, we are hoping to come back on January 4th. I state that because I am hearing rumors about the possibility of the state maybe coming out with some conversation in the next couple of days about returning on January 4th. And then, um, we also want to be aware of just the numbers, the COVID numbers. For the public, again, Newport, um, starting in September all the way till the end of November 30th, had only seven positive cases related to either staff, student, or someone that worked in the schools. It was never, it came from another student to a student. It was usually a spouse or it was an event or someplace someone had been and they had been with someone and had the COVID. During this past week, we had eight. Every day we were getting some kind of either staff, student, and then we had families that siblings that are being tested now are out as well to check for COVID. We also had one of our bus monitors test positive and that was a Sunday night, um, notice to us. And on Monday, we were investigating that today. For whatever reason, um, RIDO did not contact the families. So our team today reached out to approximately, I thought it was between 20 and 30 families. It was actually 50 families today to make them aware that their child was on a bus with a positive monitor. So that for now, RIDO is recommending those students for 10 to 14 days. That's the latest update as far as what's going on with COVID and getting back to distance learning. Our teachers are prepared. Our teachers have done this before. All of us in the district, myself included, would prefer to have our children in in-person learning, but, um, like other school districts across the state, they are starting to switch over to distance learning as well. And most of them, like us, are looking at the calendar, trying to make sure that all our families and staff can have Christmas at least COVID-free as best as possible. I'm here to answer any questions.
No? So more of a statement than a question, only because I know firsthand and Dr. Jermaine and I have talked about this many times. Uh, our district, I, I think, you know, we, we talk, uh, as school committee chairs, there's a meeting every week or 10 days, we have a meeting through the, through the fall. We've been meeting many districts sort of threw in the towel months ago, weeks ago. And I gotta give our district a lot of credit. They've worked very hard, the staff, everybody down to the school bus monitors and drivers to, to make this work, uh, the best they could. And I'm really, I have to say, I'm quite proud and happy with the staff that, uh, they've gone above and beyond. Nobody likes the word distance learning and nobody wants to be there. Uh, so I'm certainly hopeful that with what we had to implement and given over the holidays and a couple of weeks and the whole governor's pause, I hope everything kind of works out that January 4th, we can come back with a revitalized and rested population and get back to learning in, in person. So, um, there's no, go ahead, Dr. Jermaine.
So I, I, I have to say this, I know that, um, Mr. Gomes, the chair, um, we do have usually daily, if not multiple, um, texting when notifications come across, um, our, our thing. But I just need everyone to be clearly aware that our staff has been working around the clock for multiple weeks, trying to keep families notified as quickly as possible, keeping everyone, our staff and students and families safe. Um, we have been working with the city, um, City Manager Nicholson. I have been in daily contact with him as well, multiple times a day or over weekends just to help to try to prevent community spread, how important it is that if anyone is asked to, um, stay at home for 14 days, to please do so. But I do need to say, we are very lucky. We have superheroes as nurses. Our nurse, I don't, I don't even, I just turn to the nurses and I say, what do you think? And they have been there, they have reached out to families, they have given families their telephone numbers. And Carolyn Martin, Maureen Grimes, um, Lisa Butterbaugh and Sarah Clodier, along with the administrators, have been unbelievable as we've been going through this and they're still doing it and they're still working with RIDO and we will continue to do so. Because the most important thing is if any of our families do find any more positives, even when we're in distance learning, we need to know because we need to be able to track back and we need to continue to help our families and identify anyone that may need to get tested. So that's very, very important. So we will be messaging that a lot, that even though we're in distance learning, please keep us informed. The other thing, I don't have a slideshow, I was briefed this, uh, right before lunch on today, um, by RIDE, uh, the, the testing pilot at Central Falls for the, um, for the testing protocol seems to have worked very well. And I have, um, reached out and asked them if they could please send us the slide deck so I could share it with the nurses and administrators. Because if we are interested in doing asymptomatic testing, um, when we return, or maybe, I don't know if it's going to be ready before Christmas, but I am, um, trying to find out more information about that. But they do have, they have a rapid test and then they have the other one, I'm gonna misstate the name of the type of test it is, some of you may know it better, the Bio, Biomax test, Biomax test. So they will have that available and it will be just one test. We don't have to do multiples. So I'll get more information, I'm sure, in the coming days. And I've, like I said, I've reached out to the nurses and the administrators to see, um, if this is something we would be interested in as a school district. And if so, when do we think, after consultation with all of you, would be a good time for us to start this? It may help those that are concerned and when we return.
Ms. Boatright, go right ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention again, I did this at the inauguration, but I don't know how many people showed up. But I, I wanted to just mention, just as you both have said, is that this year is such an unusual year. The, the effort to educate our students is, is number one, but all the other things with COVID that have gone into this, the superintendent works, I think, seven by 24 all the time. And the administrators have had to change so much. The teachers are teaching in-person and remotely all at the same time. And the, you know, the IT, the facilities, the peop- the janitors cleaning, the nurses, everybody, it's a huge team effort. And I just want to say thank you to all of them. And I think that we, we as a community are so lucky to have everybody acting so professional. And I am just inspired by so many of these grants that you're getting all at the same time to keep the creativity alive. So I just really think we all want to say thank you to you all for doing such a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Flowers.
Yeah, thank you. Um, piggybacking on what Mrs. Boatright just said, uh, we talk about being transparent in all of our dealings and this certainly is an example of being transparent, letting the community know what the issues are and just, just being upfront. It, it's good that we have relatively few cases and one case is too much. But perhaps it's because we're being extra careful so that we can keep the numbers down. I didn't have a chance to hear the superintendent on the radio yesterday. I turned the car radio on when Bruce Newberry was extolling your virtues and then he really understood everything the way you said it. And I said, well, that's good. Yet, see, you have a teacher explaining you, you're all set. But this is a point in what I've been saying this past week too, is that of course, the, the book learning, so to speak, for our, uh, students is of the utmost importance, but the health and safety of the students and all the personnel and their families too, uh, it's the most important thing. And not just, not only with the, the COVID, but with everything else. We always say, you're not feeling well, stay home. And we really mean it. You know, we want good attendance and you can attend, uh, in distance learning, that's for sure. Uh, but we have, we really should be watching out for one another and that's, that's the whole idea of, of a community spirit. And we say, one Newport, I guess we really mean it because it's to everyone's credit. Uh, we just name everyone who's involved. So as little kids would say, good job. And, and we try to keep it up and hope that when we get into that new year, we'll prob- hopefully with, you know, vaccines and everything else, we'll be able to, uh, get, we'll, we'll get through all of this. But, um, being transparent, informing the public, using all the media is, is the most important thing. Really is.
Thank you. Thank you. And one of the other things, because we are going on distance learning, we have expanded our meal distribution locations and that was something I want to thank the community school, Cindy King. And, um, going forward, working, we'll be working with Martin Luther King and others as far as having different opportunities for, um, meal deliveries, but we will start one in front of, uh, Thompson Middle School. I believe we're going to start it immediately tomorrow. And a new flyer was created today. I did Letitia Michael over in Health Equity Zone. I met with them today. They are passing the word out as well as Newport Partners for Families. So, um, we will, and I will be following up with Mr. Young. I see him on the screen on the technology. And I did speak to at the HES meeting today about working together and trying to work with partners to see if we can help with internet connection for our children as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions on that? Okay, Ms. Winslow, go right ahead.
All right, that, that last point you just made, Dr. Jermaine, about the internet connection. So the hotspots that were set up for families who needed them back in the spring, did they like, did they have to surrender any equipment, or is all of that still in place?
We, I believe, Mr. Young's on the call, but I believe we're all in, I believe they're still all in place. And hi, do you wanna, oh, he's got his Christmas, is that your Christmas sweater?
I had my hat on. I had my hat earlier, but he took it off and we got, but yeah, so they're all in place. Nothing, we didn't take anything back. We just rolled over. And it was a six-month deal, and we just continued that when the six months were up. So yeah.
We do, we do really want to do something in the community. Mr. Young has been trying to work with different agencies to see if we can just make the internet for our students just, just like turning on the lights or whatever. And, and, right, so we, you know, we gotta, we gotta work on that. And with families working from home and multiple children in distance learning, it, you know, it hurts their bandwidth. So that's, we've got a lot of things we still gotta work on.
What we are seeing though, is that, so these devices, they're really designed to supplement your internet. So, you know, if you, you're in your car and you gotta take a meeting, you just connect to that hotspot somewhere. Or if you're, you know, if you're not at your office or at your home, then you connect to that, to that hotspot. But what we're using them for is their sole source of internet. So we are seeing them start to be damaged, not damaged, but be broken now, like they're not, they're not maintaining their charge. So we have to bring them in and exchange them. But just what they're actually designed for and what they're being used for now are two totally different things. We're seeing that throughout the state. You know, I have meetings weekly with the tech directors, and they're seeing the same thing at the hotspots. After six months of, you know, six hours a day of being used, they're starting to, to, you know, to damage or to break.
But despite it all, as part of the updates, we're wearing our hats. We have our holiday cheer, and we're, we're celebrating the holiday despite COVID. And we're all gonna do this. So we have our 12 days, thanks to our new HR director. And we have prizes and raffles going on. And I know Ms. Westman has an iSpy program going on, and the kids are doing everything. So everyone is going to be positive, and we're going to be here for all our families and all our students. So take that, COVID. We're done.
Well done. Well done indeed. Thank you all. So I, I don't think there's any, we've certainly beat that around for a bit. So the next item on the agenda here is 6.4, which is our district goals. These goals were the goals that were, it basically come out of the last evaluation period for the superintendent in collaboration with the school committee. So these goals were developed based on that evaluation process. And as we have pointed out several times this evening, in the coming days, there's a retreat by the school committee to set goals. So some of these goals may change, but if Dr. Jermaine just wanted to do a quick run-through of these or an overview, and that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gomes. Yes, so these did come out of the August meeting. Big ideas and areas of focus. We have started, I will say, some, some of the work was already in place, but we're, we've started to ramp some of that up. And you'll start to see, for instance, next month, we'll have a presentation on the ILP for our schools. For the public, academic excellence is one of, one of the areas. Timelines are being put in place for individual learning plans for students, grade six through 12, and professional development. Staffing plans have been reviewed as an administrative team. And we're working on our 2022 staffing based upon what we need following the data. And also the new regulations, ELL is a big focus for us. The next area is sustaining quality fiscal management. And Mr. Goncalves, who have been very lucky with Ronald Goncalves, he's providing regular updates on us, for, to us for spending and continues to monitor the revenues. He is presently working with the building administrators and directors on staffing needs as well as budget overall. For the next three to five years, we're hoping to have some kind of tentative budget formed. And again, aligning our practices and how we do it with the city so that we're all on the same page on how we do our workman comp estimates, our health estimates, et cetera, when we do our planning. And thank you to Ms. Boatright for her oversight on the, as the chair of the Finance Committee has been helping us tremendously. Improve, the next area is improving and maintaining high-quality communication. And thank you, Dr. Flowers, for bringing up the transparency that it is something where we've been and we're trying to work on. Our principals on a weekly basis send out updates to families when and if we know anything of importance. In this case, it's been if we have any positive cases or probable cases related to COVID. We've been communicating that out as much as possible on the day of to keep families informed. Again, going back to what Dr. Flowers said about the radio, Bruce Newberry, I know, has been very helpful. What's Up Nope has been a great asset for us to help get the words out, word out with Ryan Bellmore and the podcasts. So I want to thank them. It Takes a Village as far as communication, has Newport Partners for Families. We're trying every, all different avenues. We did have a mini grant with the Van Buren Charitable Foundation to help us when we did the re-entry plan for the summer and keeping communications current and open. And we now have a draft that we will be working with some foundations that we're hoping they will fund to help us as far as do a plan and also to help us in training and coaching for communications. Another area, the fourth one out of the five, is maintaining and creating an affordable facilities maintenance tracking system. And Mr. Young has done an excellent job working with the plant engineers. He's developing a schedule for regular maintenance, cleaning, painting, minor repairs for the school year. And then he's also refining plans for emergency projects and ongoing projects throughout the school year. He will also continue to provide an updated report for the committee as we move forward. I know he is working with Ms. Bowlin, who oversees facilities. And I believe, I think Ms. Boatright's working on that as well, to help some kind of tracking system. I know committee member Winslow had some suggestions that might make it easier. We are also in the maintaining and creating an affordable facilities maintenance tracking system, working closely with the city and making sure we're meeting all the minimum requirements as a school district and with the city as far as the amount of reinvestment we put into our schools and budgeting the appropriate amount to keep maintaining our schools. Which I know, Mr. Leary's, that's always been one of Mr. Leary's priorities, committee member, Leary. And then the final one, which it's not final, it just happens to be in the order that it's on the page. But I believe it's the heart and soul of our work that we're going to need to do going forward. And that's addressing racial equity, diversity, implicit bias, and relevance for our students, staff, and district. Like other school districts and like the country in itself, the demographics of the United States is changing very quickly and very dramatically. And we, as a city, pride ourselves in being very diverse. That's what makes us so strong. And it also, it's makes Newport such a great city. And working with our community partners, we, and I want to compliment Nico Merritt and Ellen Pinnock. They will start to head a committee, which they've asked me to participate in, in building a committee, a community of trust. And how do we build trust and work with partners, all for the same goals, to build a great school system. This afternoon, as Nico mentioned, she has just had three programs qualify for the Advanced Course Network, which is a more hands-on, I'll say, learning project. And we'll have future discussions on that. But allowing there to be different alternatives for us, our students, to keep them engaged during the school hours and after the school hours as well. So there's a lot of work we have to do as adults in that area. And that's, those are the big five that came out of August. And I know on Saturday, I believe, the group is going to speak to it more.
Yes. Any questions or comment from the school committee on that segment that we just discussed? Ms. Winslow? No? Trying to read you.
There, I could probably, we only have two hours scheduled for Saturday. I'm, I'm sure we could do it every Saturday for two hours.
Well, we may, we may be, we'll be able to add time as needed, so.
Yeah, no, there's a lot. There's so much we're working towards and so much good stuff going on already that, you know, we talked about so many things tonight. So it just, it's a lot. It's a lot to process.
Yes. All right, not seeing or hearing any questions. Thank you, Dr. Jermaine. I'm gonna keep moving on. The next area on the meeting is the Consent Agenda 7. I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve 7.1 and 7.2 of the Consent Agenda as presented. Dr. Flowers making the motion, seconded by Ms. Winslow. Excuse me, is there any questions or discussion on 7.1, 7.2 by any school committee members? Mr. Dring?
And Mr. Chair, I obviously was not on the school committee then, so I'm, I'm just gonna abstain from voting on it. Because I, I obviously, I don't know what was in the minutes or what happened.
That's understandable. Thanks. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Ms. Nash, could you do a roll call vote to approve the Consent Agenda 7.1, 7.2 as presented this evening?
Certainly. Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Bowlin?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Abstain.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. Next item we roll into is number eight, it's correspondence. We have one correspondence from Ride, and it is the, it is the Ride. Catching up here, sorry. Let me just get to that, the monthly correspondence. This is a Ride District Accountability Discussion Presentation. I believe Ride sent it to us. So as your motion to accept the correspondence from Ride is presented this evening. Mrs. Boatright, seconded by Mrs. Bowlin. Discussion or questions from the school committee? Seeing none, Ms. Nash, could you just do a roll call vote to accept the correspondence from Ride as presented?
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Bowlin?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary? And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, that role that we get into, the reports from superintendent and staff. The first area on this every month, 9.1, 9.2 is Mr. Goncalves. The business manager will give us a brief overview of his communications and take any questions. So Mr. Goncalves, if you'd like to give us an update, starting with 9.1?
I, thank you again. And I'm not sure if I missed it or not, but did, was there action on 7.2? There was, I'm sorry.
They were approved. 7.1 and 7.2 were approved.
It was one, one consent. Okay, thank you. I apologize.
Just combined them into one vote, but they were both approved.
Thank you. I missed it. So I have provided an update on where we are financially, which is, you know, basically very similar to the previous few months, which is we have a budget in place and we are in line, aligned to spend as our budget sees. Right now, there are not material updates for me to share. We have still the one very important unknown, which is awaiting general assembly action. And that's our final state aid numbers. So I just wanted to share that again, and I anticipate that will be shared outward soon. I'm optimistic as well.
I believe, I thought I saw a correspondence today that the Finance Committee at the state is meeting tomorrow to take an initial vote on the budget. So I'm optimistic that will happen. But I, I know that there is a committee meeting to at least take an initial vote on the budget. So might be some movement on that in the next week.
Thank you.
Any questions on 9.1, on the expenditure and revenue report from Mr. Goncalves? Based on his document that he presents? Not seeing any. If you wanted to just, I don't know, do you have anything up, Mr. Leary? Did you have a?
I'm good. Thank you, Mr..
No, I just, you lit up for a minute there. You might have just, just wanted to make sure you didn't have a question. 9.2, Mr. Goncalves, anything on the restricted grant report?
No, I don't have anything new to share with restricted grants. We've been fully awarded our CARES Act, though, CARES Act dollars. So that was a terrific infusion by the federal government. It was helpful this first half of the year. I just wanted to share that.
Great. Thank you. Any questions on 9.2 from Mr. Goncalves, from any of the committee members? Already? We will move into 9.3, Superintendent Jermaine, on the enrollment reports and demographic reports.
I really don't have anything much to share. There isn't significant changes as of now.
Any questions for, from the school committee or comment for Dr. Jermaine on the enrollment, excuse me, in demographic reports? Okay. Next report, if there were questions, 9.4, the homeless reports from the superintendent as presented. Any questions or comments for the superintendent? Okay. Now, 9.5, distance learning, in-person learning report. Basically that, we kind of covered that up in the 6.3, the re-entry plan. But any questions on the distance learning in-person? Nope, basically covered that earlier. The next report moves to Mr. Young, the facilities, I'm sorry, Ms. Winslow, I looked down at the screen. Go right ahead.
Sorry. I, I actually, it's not necessarily a question related to this report, but slightly. I wondered if I could request a discussion item next week, or it might depend. Because I think Dr. Jermaine said she was going to provide us or try to provide the latest on the attendance reporting in January's meeting. And so I don't know if it'll come here under reports or under discussion items. But just, especially based on things I heard tonight about, you know, kids going home now and maybe hotspot's not working out, and they've got to get back out in the cold now to get their meals. And we know that all over America, distance learning is hard for a lot of kids, and they're not participating in school. And I, I'm personally very afraid of that in our district. And so I just wanted to have the opportunity to try to outline the. have the opportunity to try to outline the, or at least discuss the items that we hope the school staff can track in the attendance data. I think a lot of things will be above and beyond what they normally, you know, the kids here or not, that's now gone out the window. I mean, now, how do we mark down that this student missed the day of school because the hotspot failed? And how that might impact their learning? And I just want to try to keep track of these things, because I think in, you know, a year from now, two years from now, we're going to want to know the history to explain what had, you know, where our students are and why. I'm not really so much concerned about the numbers of kids absent as I am that our interventions are working, if people are knocking on doors and making phone calls, that they're actually getting to kids. So all these things that, you know, we, I want to report on the results and, and the effects of COVID on, on attendance, and so, like I said, it's usually in a report, the report's section nine, but I'm not sure if we should do it as a discussion item instead or wait for Dr. Jermaine's update in January, but I, I want to keep an eye on it soon.
That's all. That's, that's fine. I can, I can have an update on how we're going to try, how we're going to try to track attendance and what data we're going to be using. And I can share what they do when children are not there and our interventions, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dring, go right ahead.
I'd also like to know, you know, is there a policy, going to be a policy for these kids who literally aren't showing up to distance learning? You know, are they going to get an incomplete? Are they going to get an F? I mean, I'd love just to know, you know, at some point, you know, what, what the plan is, is there a policy in place to deal with these kids?
The principals have been having discussions because of COVID and, Mr. Dring, to your point, if they show up or not. And the other point is, is it really an F or isn't it incomplete? And at the end of the day, what we would like is for the student to participate in his or her learning. So there's been discussions at faculty meetings regarding what is an F and why do we give them, or should we even be giving them? And then there's a discussion about incompletes and how, what should the timeline be? But I will, I will get that information from my administrators as far, and also share some, I believe I may have, prior to your arrival, shared a few articles that have been shared with staff and discussed with them regarding all of this. This is a challenge, meaning having students on the screen or not even showing themselves on the screen, you know, using the cameras, and there's a whole other discussion regarding that as well. And how do you grade someone? So we can definitely do that. I will share with you that we do have an intervention already in place, and you may have seen it in the MLK update, Heather Strout, did she put something in about it? Where we've been, for Thompson, we've been using the MLK Center. And for the children that were having trouble in distance learning, even for the hybrid, they were in-person learning, but during hybrid days, they were not doing well. We actually had the, our AmeriCorps volunteers and we've had others that are working specifically with these students, and they come to that location on their DL day. We were seeing improvements there. And that seems to be a big challenge, is when we're in the hybrid, and I'll speak just to Thompson, when we're in the hybrid model on the distance learning days, it's very difficult, because some parents have to go to work. And we'd like to think that a seventh grader or eighth grader can be responsible and stay at home and go to school. It's not always working that way. So we have been trying to look into different alternatives. But I will try to at least get a preliminary ready for January and maybe have more in-depth information for you by Friday, not Friday, by February. Okay? But we, we have been looking at that, yes. You're welcome.
All righty, any other question? Yes, Mr. Leary?
Glad to hear from Ms. Winslow and Mr. Dring, because I've been, anybody knows, I've been hearing on these points over and over, month after month, about the tendency of using them and stuff like that. So I don't need to comment anymore, I'm sure everybody's sick of me saying it all the time, but I'm glad to see other members have stepped up for this, and I want to thank them very much.
All righty, thank you. Not hearing or seeing any other comments, we'll move along to 9.6, which is the facility update. I know Mr. Young hanging out with us. Yeah. And he has his report that he's been working on, and I don't know if there's any questions from Mr. Young, or if Mr. Young has any...
Yeah, so I just want to comment, but today, today I met with Ms. Boatright and Ms. Bowlen to come up with a, I know this, the form that you have now is like 50 something pages, so we're going to have something that's more concise and do about a 30 or 60-day window of one, what was repaired in those last 30 days, and how much it costs to have those repairs, so we can start tracking any kind of trends and some of the financial impact, and then what we're looking at doing in the next 30 or 60 days with that. So I'm going to finalize that format, send it to them for approval, and know, from this point forward, going, monthly briefs will have kind of that format set, so, so we all have an understanding of what's kind of going on in our buildings right now. We have that data and I keep that, but I'll be able to put it down on paper and present to the, to the committee. Also, just a, you know, a couple heads up is that, you know, the buildings are still, you know, going well. I think Mr. Jermaine had talked about, it's not, I mean, the reason why we're having these pauses is not because of, you know, the buildings itself, it's just a matter of, you know, adult behavior and just how things are, you know, spreading, not just in Newport, but throughout the state. So that's definitely a, you know, an attaboy to the teams, you know, all the, all the facilities, workers are in there, they're doing their diligence. I see them in, you know, spraying daily, wiping stuff down, constantly keeping up with, you know, with the traffic. If there's something that happens in one of the rooms, they'll call, let me know, say, hey, just want to, you know, make sure we're doing this the right way, and, you know, for disinfecting and making sure that, that the rooms are safe. So, you know, they're doing an awesome job with that in this really unprecedented time. So I could tell you, 18 months ago, there isn't anybody who knew how to disinfect, you know, a classroom, they knew how to clean it, but now they're going, you know, above and beyond, and they know more about, you know, molecules and COVID and spreading of things than, than, you know, they ever expected. So, you know, I'm definitely happy with, with what, with what they've done. We've also, just an update on the committee, as we did last week, we picked up 75 additional filters that will be distributed throughout the district as needed. I know Thompson has already come and picked up their, their first batch, and they'll be coming back for some more, so it's just an extra layer of protection for some, some spaces and some parts of the buildings that are needed. We already just distributed them throughout Rogers first, because, you know, obviously they don't have the, the central, the air circulation needed in there, but after that, we were able to get more to distribute throughout, throughout all the buildings. So, again, the team's doing an awesome job with that. And then now with the pause, we are walking through, we're going to start highlighting some, some small, quick projects that we can knock out while those students are not in the building. I talked to Thompson today, they're going to start painting again on Monday, so there's going to be some smaller projects, and I'll report that, that back to the committee, you know, monthly.
Excellent, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments from Mr. Young on his facilities report?
I would just like to make everyone aware, districts don't even have HEPA filters, and Mr. Young was able to secure some right away for Rogers, and now he's got the whole district covered. So I just want to thank him for his aggressive buying, and he and Mark Gaynor, I know he helps out, but again, the custodians, all of you, thank you. The plant engineers are doing a great job, thank you.
Yeah, once again, the staff has been doing a great job in that area as well, so thank you. Thanks, thanks for hanging in with us tonight and that report, thank you, thank you. Next, that leads us down into 9.7, superintendent's update. It's a sort of collaboration of several reports, partnership, no pun intended, partnerships, collaborations, personal. Any questions for the superintendent on 9.7? Not seeing or hearing any. That would lead us to a motion, yes, Mr. Leary?
I have some questions on the personnel.
Oh, go right ahead.
Thank you. So, Ms. Jermaine, and this might be for, is Mr. Galvin with us or not?
No, Mr. Galvin generally takes off, but...
Yeah, we don't need to have him spend the money, and I hear that, three hours. So my question may have to go to Mr. Galvin both ways. So in the past, I know that we did the vice consent for hiring, and now superintendent in, in January, going to be the principal of their building, but we never see now, like, you just hired and directed a few resources, I'm sure she's fine, but we never saw if there was 15 people applied, one person applied, but they were nothing. So I guess the question to possibly Ms. Jermaine or, or Mr. Galvin, are we entitled to look at that now or no? That's one question, I'll answer.
I think, Mr. Leary, I'm always happy to share, but I think that's an, I think that's a question for Mr. Galvin, because I think, I believe at this point in time, that does fall, at this point in time, falls in the realm of the superintendent. And, you know, I share the information and make you aware, as well as sharing, you know, resumes, et cetera, for administrative positions, which I did for our new director. I'm certainly, I can talk to or if the chair wants to speak to, yes.
I'll talk to Mr. Leary tomorrow and get some direction on, Mr. Leary, I'm sorry, Mr. Leary. I'll talk to Mr. Galvin tomorrow and get some direction or an answer on that for you.
Okay, great. The second part is, if you look at the, what we have here, leave of absences, in our contract it says that the Newport School Committee can allow five leave of absence, the first five from 10, and after that, number six, number seven, number 107, it's up to the school committee's choice. Now, I'm not against any of these leave of absence that are here, I want to be clear about that, but wouldn't that still be up, peremptive to do that? Is that a given, Mr. Galvin question?
I hear what you're saying. I would think it may, it's because it's in their CBA, but I would defer to Mr. Galvin for that answer. I hear what you're saying, after five, it should possibly go, in May, should go to you. I don't know if we have that many, though.
Oh, we have one five. That I can tell you.
Teachers?
I think what he... I would just help clarify what, what he was saying, so that in the, in the contract, it doesn't specify whether it's a one-day leave of absence or a one-year leave of absence. Maybe it's something that needs to be taken up with the teachers' union. So basically, if, you know, the first five could be five people who took off five days.
That's a good point, Ms. Bowlen. Yes, because for year leaves, I know we don't, I'm pretty certain we don't have five, I think we have two or three.
I will, I'll review, I'll review that language from Mr. Galvin. I, I thought the language in the contract, the five number was more to that yearly basis, I believe, than the, to Mrs. Bowlen's point, the leave, somebody that takes leave of absence for one day or two days, basically taking leave without pay. But I'll review both of those with Mr. Galvin and get, get the answer out to everybody, Mr. Leary.
All right, great, thank you very much.
And just as an FYI, because I went through it today, I believe all of you, as far as the new, to Mr. Leary's point about the January 1st, there, there's going to be another transition, you know, now it's not going to be the superintendent's, going down to the principal level as far as hiring and all that. I believe Mr. RIDE is going to have a presentation for all you, if it's not, I think it's tomorrow, it's pretty soon.
Well, no, that, that was again today, after you guys, it was the chairs, committee, but that, there is another one, they are going to do more, but I think we had the same presentation that the superintendent's group had earlier in the day. But we were on that, to Mr. Leary's point, it was discussed with the new regulations and especially with the stuff that takes effect in this coming January, that this, none of it is meant to supersede the collective bargaining agreements, and that's one of those areas it's going to take some getting used to and looking at, because there is some of it that's a gray area for the most, for the best way to put it at this point, so, but I will get those questions to Mr. Galvin, to your point, in the morning, Mr. Did you have any other questions on the?
Right.
So with that said, a motion would be in order to approve the report as presented this evening in section nine. Do we have a motion? Dr. Flowers with a second from, we need to send Mr. Dring, okay, thank you. So we have a motion to approve the reports as presented to us this evening and seconded, we've discussed them, so there'll be no discussion on them. And Ms. Nash, if you could do a roll call vote to accept the reports in the superintendent's, from superintendent and staff as presented?
Yes. Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Bowlen?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. 7:00?
Thank you. Section, next section up is suggested meeting dates and agenda items. One thing COVID has done is certainly, no meetings and dates much anymore, so the only two dates on here, Saturday, December 12th, as we've discussed several times this evening, 9:00 AM, the school committee will be meeting in a retreat format to discuss and set up goals for the year. And Tuesday, January 12th is our next regularly scheduled school committee meeting at 5:00 PM as of right now.
I think we, I think, I believe at the building subcommittee meeting on December 22nd, they are going to be requesting, or they would like the school committee to have a brief meeting to appoint a recommendation for an OPM. I believe, the chairs, the co-chairs.
Right, at 5:00 PM, we were hoping to have that set, and the recommendation will be coming quickly, so to put it on, it could always be canceled if we don't meet those dates, but I think it needs to go on there, right?
Hey, we can make sure that gets whatever it needs.
Okay, great.
That is it on meeting dates, there is no executive session for this evening. That brings us to adjournment, a motion to adjourn would be in order. Ms. Boatright, seconded by Ms. Winslow, and we'll do a simple voice vote. All those in favor to adjourn, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much. We are adjourned, thank you all for the time this evening, and have a good night.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you very much.
Take care, good night.
Yep.
Bye.
Good night, thank you.